And we can, we can go for it. Thanks, Vicky.
Great. Welcome to the Somerville Job Creation and Retention Trust Meeting of September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. My name is Vicky Coitz and I am a managing trustee of the Job Creation and Retention Trust, and I call this meeting to order at six thirty-five P M. On March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, Governor Healy signed into law a bill which extends the temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This session is being held in a hybrid format, will be recorded, and will be a public record. I will now ask the board members to confirm they are in attendance in alphabetical order. Thomas Bent?
Present.
Vicky Coitz, present. Silvana Dinkin, Dinka? Jim Hatchey? Think I saw him. Jacob Luria?
Present.
Wilfred Imba? Rachel Nedkarny? I think that was a, a present.
Yep.
Uh, Annika Van Eaton is absent tonight. Rand Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum. I now ask city staff to present a few house rules about using the technology.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, my name is William Blackmore. I'm the Workforce Development Coordinator, answer as the staff liaison for the trust. When an agenda item is being presented, presentation materials received ahead of time will, sorry, um, received ahead of time will be displayed on the screen. If the chair asks for a public comment, please use the raise hand function on Zoom if you would like to speak, and you will be unmuted, given two minutes to speak. Trust members, all votes must be roll call votes with a motion and a second. The chair will call on you in alphabetical order for a yes/no vote. And any comments in the chat box will be part of the public records in accordance with the open meeting law. One-to-one chat is also disabled, uh, to comply with our public records law. So I will pass it back to Vicky for our first item.
Great. Thank you, William. Our first agenda item is to review and approve, uh, the past meeting minutes from the August twenty first meeting. Uh, are there any edits or revisions to be made to these meeting minutes before we seek a motion?
No, nope.
Great. Seeing none, I welcome a motion to pass the meeting minutes from the August twenty first meeting.
I second.
Excellent. We'll now do a roll call vote in favor of passing the meeting minutes from August twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Tom Bent?
Yes.
Vicky Coitz, yes. Silvana Dinka?
Yes.
Is Jim Hatchey here yet?
No, I think he'll be joining around seven.
Okay. Jacob Luria?
Yeah.
Wilfred Imba not here. Uh, Rachel Nedkarny?
Yes.
And Rand Wilson?
Abstain.
And I think since this is just a, uh, formality, meeting minutes, we've got five votes in favor, which is a majority, so the motion passes.
Yep.
Right. I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, William to review the next agenda item.
Thanks, Vicky. So on my screen, I'm gonna make it a little bit larger. Um, our, our received and, um, anticipated or estimated linkage fees, um, the update, two updates this month. One is that we did receive four hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, that was for four nine, the four ninety-five Columbia property. Um, so that was one of our two outstanding checks. Um, we are still anticipating one more check in the next few months coming from the seventy-four Middlesex project, uh, in assembly. And that is the last of the anticipated, um, projects that we have, um, on the horizon for now. Uh, we also, uh, accumulated approximately twenty thousand dollars in interest this month. So with that check received, the interest received, and then also, um, the RFP that was issued for one million dollars, that brings our current funding available to about two point three million dollars of uncommitted funds. So happy to take any questions on that.
Just seems like we're doing a little better than expected. We were, you know, understandably being cautious, but hasn't been a bad year. Am I not reading it right?
Yeah, there's, this has definitely been, um, we've received about two point four million this year, so that is the strongest year. Um, these are mostly second half payments for projects, so it is the, the ending of, um, the pipeline per se. So Rachel, see your hands up?
Yeah, I can give a little context. Just, there was an interpretation, uh, question that was delaying, uh, as about eight projects from doing their second half payments for a little bit. Um, took a while to sort through. Um, so that's why it's, I, I would say if you look back probably our twenty twenty four and even our twenty twenty four is probably very low compared to what we were, uh, expecting. Um, and again, we're
Eight, eight thousand, yeah.
Yeah, and so that's where we, we really are seeing like this is a culmination of, of that wave of construction from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four. These are those last payments. Um, so for instance, seventy-four Middlesex, they're, they still owe us their last payment. They aren't quite done with a couple of things, and so they still owe payments on a few different places, including this linkage, um, but they aren't quite done with their civic space. Um, so that's there, but the building has been substantially complete for a year.
Rachel, did they have their, uh, CFO on that certificate? I've, I can see it.
They have a temp C O, yes.
Yeah, temp, but not a, so they don't have to pay until they have the final C O, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's pretty often was suspected. Once you get a temp, you're kind of on the road to get the poll, like you've done a work.
Yeah, usually there's, it's more technical things that sign offs and things like that. And most of these projects that are in the final payment twenty five probably broke around in twenty one or twenty two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of these we saw first half payments for the building permit in twenty-two or twenty-three. Yeah, so it's the tail end of those.
And the bonus was the twenty thousand in interest, yeah.
So, do we have a sense of what's in the pipeline, if anything?
We don't, we don't have any, anything beyond the second half of this payment for seventy-four Middlesex. So the twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven projection is, is nothing at, at this point. Um.
Well, at least we were cautious.
Yep.
We have money to take us there. It, it's amazing how quickly it dried up.
Yeah, that's the overall economy, you know, with everything going on and research and and all that, that's just, it's really, plus, you know, I think the overbuilding of the lab space, I think symbolize over three million square feet with empty lab space right now.
Yeah. I mean, square footed graves downtown are plummeting.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're looking for new office space, and we're looking at very nice, dusty office, like thirty-four, thirty-fives, what's that?
Yeah, and that's what they're saying. Existing companies just moving to get a better deal, you know, yep.
I see Rachel has a hand.
Yeah, I just, I, I think in terms of thinking about the, the years out projection, right, that we, that zero, I, I would say we should anticipate beyond two years of no additional, um, coming in because the, the first payments don't occur until they're at building permit stage.
Yeah.
So they need to actually make it through all the permitting. Uh, we aren't seeing anyone breaking ground across all of greater Boston at this point without a tenant. Um, exactly to Jacob's point, there's just, there's so much available in office or lab at the moment that they're just, no one's gonna build unless it's, they already have a tenant lined up. So I, I would anticipate that we won't see substantial new commercial growth again, i- in, in terms of like pipeline into the jobs trust for at least three years, right? Because you gotta anticipate there's a, like the time leading up to the building permit too, like they get the approval and then they get the building permit, like that itself has a lag. Um, so we'll know those announcements before they get to the building permit stage, and we'll have, we'll have a window. That at this point, I, I think we should anticipate longer than two years, just to give you both sense.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or thoughts, uh, we could probably move to the next set of agenda items, which William will handle for us as well as updates to various work that we're doing.
Thanks, Vicky. So what I'm sharing on my screen is our, um, investment priority tracker, and I'm gonna give an update on some of the, uh, programs that have recently, uh, concluded and, um, other, other program activities. So, um, the, um, a couple, so first status update, uh, the scale, scales contextualized programs for two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five are scheduled to wrap up at the end of this month. Uh, then we will be getting a final report on that, um, that I will share off with the board. Uh, we had one recently concluded program was Somerville English Language Learning Project led by Bunker Hill Community College. Uh, a memo on the results of that program was shared with board members, uh, giving an overview of the project, including its successes and its challenges. Um, and another program I wanted to mention is the post-secondary success program, which is also scheduled to conclude this fall. Um, wanted to see if anyone had questions on any of these programs or the memo that was shared, um, regarding the Bunker Hill program.
Just a, it, when I was reading through the bunker hill and a little disappointed in what they're, I, I thought, I, I found the memo a little confusing, you know, to, uh, and ha- ha- have you had any more discussions with them? Because it looked like, and I don't have the memo in front of me right now, but, um, you know, I think that when, when they were originally going into it, I think they were projecting like a hundred and fifty, uh, people, uh, in that, and the numbers were well below that.
Yeah, I can talk about, I can talk about it a little bit. So they had projected, um, two hundred enrollments for the last school year, ended up at a hundred and thirty-nine enrollments. Um, they had projected, uh, then a seventy percent, I believe, a seventy percent completion rate. Have to double check the number. Um, actually, I think I have it with me.
Looking at it now.
Um, so yeah, a hundred and thirty-nine enrollments was, uh, sixty-nine point five percent of their enrollment goal. They had a hundred and five students complete, um, the program, and about seventy-five percent of students, um, received their stipends. So the kind of combination of lower enrollment, uh, lower completion numbers, and then, um, not getting the stipends out to all of the students, um, actually left about ninety-five thousand dollars, um, in the contract that they were not able to capture. Um, so I think that's definitely a question going into, um, the next month. Probably we need to take a vote on that maybe in the October, um, meeting about those unspent funds and whether those just return to the uncommitted funds.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, it's, um, yeah, they, they had mentioned some, of course, some challenges with the delay in the grant approval and that impacting enrollment. Um, so we, I, I proposed, um, just in the future recommending that they do not enroll, uh, students before the grant award is announced so that they can avoid that issue.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, I was gonna ask Vicky a question because I know she's in the field. Vicky, looking, looking at their report, do you feel like this was good report? Or, you know, I, I know you're, you're, you're in all this, so you have a better feel for, um, you know, what, what to expect out of, uh, something like this?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, in normal times, this definitely would not be a good report. Uh, you'd, a, a Bunker Hill Community College type program that's been running for a while should easily meet at least eighty percent of its outcomes, both in terms of enrollment and completion. Um, but, uh, because we're not in normal times, I, I don't think it's catastrophic. Uh, I was particularly struck by, um, the point about, uh, how they had lower level English speakers enrolling and how folks were very hesitant to share their personal, uh, demographic information, uh, due to the, uh, immigration, um, problems we're experiencing right now. So I think that they are experiencing, um, some pretty challenging issues which help to explain the low outcomes. What I thought as I was reading this is what does it mean if they apply for the general RFP with the same program? Are they gonna encounter these same issues, or have they figured out ways of, um, you know, tackling these issues so they have better outcomes in a, a potential next round?
Yeah, I saw in the questions that were sent out. One of the questions was about the amount of information, um, required on students. And I, you know, I think, William, you, you answered it the best you could because we have to have a certain amount of information, but, um, yeah, I could tell that that was definitely a problem with, with what was going on here. Thank, thanks, Vicky.
Mm-hmm. And I think the other thing that, and I think William's making this clear to them that, you know, the, the next general round isn't, clearly isn't coming out, uh, to fund them in enough time for the fall semester, so they really just need to plan on a spring and possibly summer and next fall semester. So just making sure they get that right, because that'll help with the first challenge that they experienced.
Yep.
Rachel, Rachel has her hand up.
Yeah, I was curious, given what they said with the, they needed a hundred and fifty to run the program for semester. We've got ninety-five left, William?
Yeah.
That went unspent. I mean, it's past fall semester start right now, but I, I would be curious if, if they could if it would need a would they still need, like, I'm, I'm curious from them, like, would they still need a hundred, a hundred and fifty to run the program for spring twenty twenty-five, or would a no-cost extension, like, get it there, right? To be able to offer a third semester of programming?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking a little bit about, you know, this balance, are there alternatives to just putting it back into the pot? Um, I think, um, I think that a no-cost extension is something that the grantee could have brought up in the spring or at some point when they were noticing those lower enrollment numbers. Um, it is going to be a bit of a challenge with the new RFP because their limit for, uh, per proposal is a hundred thousand dollars per year. Um, so I think either way, we're looking at, um, some adjustments happening. Um, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't really have experience going to a grantee at, at this point, a few months after the grant has ended, to talk about, you know, them continuing to work with funds or, or I don't really know if we can do an extension on something that's that far expired. Um, but I'm curious if others have, have thoughts on that.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised that they didn't ask for no-cost extension. So the fact that they didn't ask for it makes me think that we should probably just close the lid on it rather than, um, try to, you know, have a, a potential messy situation and then just, you know, have them, um, apply for another round of funding. And actually, I don't know, was there no-cost extension language in their contract? Had we added it in by the time we made this contract with them?
Um, I think it's in all of the contracts. I think it's in the terms to reach out about the extension possibility. Um, I can double check.
Yeah, because I know it's kind of been a little recent that we've added it in. Any other questions or thoughts on Bunker Hill, or should we go to the, um, other updates on the two RFPs, the one that just closed and the one that's still out? Sounds like we can move on.
Need forward, yeah. Um, so the next update is on the Good Municipal Jobs Request for Proposals. We talked about this a little bit at last month's meeting. Um, just as a reminder, this RFP closed in mid-August, and we received five proposals. The subcommittee, uh, Tom, Silvana, Rand, and Vicky then, um, submitted individual scores on the proposals, and there were some follow-up questions that the board members had for the proposers. So I've gone ahead, um, last week I sent out those questions to each proposer and gave them a deadline of Friday to get their responses back to me. My plan once we have those responses will be to reconvene the subcommittee. Um, and the intention will be to finalize a recommendation, recommendations to bring to the board at the October meeting. Um, so again, we were initially thinking we might have recommendations at September, but there were enough outstanding questions that, uh, it's looking like October will be when we have those recommendations. Unless there are any questions, I can move on to the Fall twenty twenty-five JCRT Request for Proposals. So this Request for Proposals is live, was released on September third, and we held an information session last week on September eleventh. And, uh, questions from proposers were received and, uh, responded to uh, yesterday, actually. We received the questions from the info session and then any that were written independently. The proposals will be due on Friday, October third, and from October third to October ninth, the subcommittee will then be independently reviewing and scoring those proposals. On the ninth, the subcommittee will come together at six thirty. We have a meeting that evening to, um, talk about the proposal scores and make recommendations to the board. Um, and then we are anticipating those votes also potentially taking place in the October sixteenth meeting. So right now we have Silvana, Tom, and Annika who will be, um, reading and scoring proposals. Um, we are looking for one more board member to review and score those proposals that could also join us on the ninth, um, to talk through the recommendations to make to the board. So I wanted to see if there is any, um, any volunteers to join that review committee, um, for, for those proposals. So we have, right now we have Silvana, Tom, and Annika.
And welcome, Jim.
Hey, Jim.
Hello.
I'm happy to help if you need another body.
Great. Um, Rachel, I will then loop you in on those invites. Um, we did have eleven or twelve participants at the info session, so I am expecting a good amount of proposals that we'll be going through. So, um, I'll get those invites on your radar, and then we will move forward from there.
Thanks, Rachel, for stepping up. Are there any other questions or comments on the, uh, current request for proposal that's out? Okay. And then the, the next, um, agenda item is to discuss the annual meeting plan. So we'll have our annual meeting on November twentieth, where we seek input from the public on our investments and our, uh, current investments and future investments. Um, and I know that, um, William and, and Annika had, uh, some conversation about what that meeting could look like based on what, uh, we've talked about a little bit in this group in the past. Um, so William, I'll let you facilitate this conversation as well, since I had to
Yeah.
rep meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so, yeah, last month we did talk a little bit about this in the board meeting, uh, what we were going to be using the annual meeting for, since we weren't going to be presenting like a ranked priority list um, like we had last year. Um, we talked about priorities for that, for our annual meeting being previewing upcoming investments, showcasing the impact of the JCRT, and also informing the community about the fiscal picture that the trust is facing. Um, and we had a little bit of conversation at the end of the meeting as well about, uh, creative partnerships. So asking the public to help us think about creative partnerships to support impact and longevity of the trust. Um, I had mentioned that involvement from employers and inviting employers to the annual meeting was a, a good starting place, but I wanted to see if there were any other thoughts on creative partnerships uh, or who we are trying to more engage in the trust? And then thinking about where does this engagement come from? Is this board-led engagement? Is this city staff-led engagement? Is this a combination? Um, so just want to hear any other thoughts on, um, I guess it, it's coming back to kind of what, what is our question? Or what are we seeking from the public, um, in this public meeting? In terms of, um, helping us brainstorm for the future? In terms of um helping us brainstorm for the future.
I think, you know, we've talked about before, uh trying to bring in more uh uh of the, you know. The business community to be more involved with with uh with all this because. You know, they can also, you know, uh provide uh resources, but also uh what they feel like, what where the gaps are. For employment opportunities and things like that, so I think. Um you know, uh reaching out to the to the overall business community in the city. And uh you know, I I know we can utilize uh the Chamber of Commerce to help with that. But then I think that would be a partnership of like the Chamber and maybe the city trying to. Uh recruit, you know, more people to show up at the meeting to uh to facilitate. You know, what's going on and what they're seeing out there for employment needs, that might be a start.
Great, so it sounds like some more more aggressive sharing out of. Um. The invite to employers, to the co- Chamber of Commerce, um and. I think continuing to build this as an opportunity for them to learn a little bit more about. What investments the city is making in workforce development um and how they can. Play play a larger role in that.
Uh Wi- William, uh another idea specifically for the annual meeting is in the past, we've always highlighted. Sort of from the participant perspective, how the program has been beneficial. But maybe we want to have one or two employers who have benefited from hiring folks who graduated from our programs that we funded. Tell their story.
Yeah.
Put a story like that in the in the uh annual report.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Vicky, um. I was reaching out to get some photos to include in the annual report to our partners, so. I can also ask them about employers that may be interested in speaking.
And Jim has his hand up, Jim?
Yeah, so I guess just same same along those lines, how about folks that that receive the grants and just kind of like. Success stories, you know, like, hey, we have, you know, we have forty-two people run through the program, forty out of forty-two, you know. And just have them report out and like really a couple of the big success stories and probably the ones with bigger enrollment. Just to show um show what, you know, where the funds are going and how successful the programs are.
Yeah, cuz from some of the stories we had last time, they they were they were good, they, you know, they really kind of impacted, you know. How much this actually helped them, yeah.
So maybe, so it sounds like we're maybe inviting. An organization to share on a program and maybe an organization and a participant. Um kind of doing that together.
Yeah, that'd be that'd be nice too, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Rand?
Somebody that got a job.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the most powerful thing of all is a person that went through a training. And got a job.
Yep.
And to tell that story is what I want to hear. And and we have to allow time, you know, for public. Comment. Uh there isn't generally been too much, but uh. You know, everybody that attends ought to be invited to. Make a comment after we've done some public education and the dog, the dog and pony. Have we got, have we got an announcement? William, do we have something that um we can circulate to folks?
Not quite, um.
Okay.
But we do have the date and I believe we have this room. Booked already, so that's something um. We can get out um in the next couple of weeks to to hold the time on people's calendars.
Uh hopefully not in the next couple of weeks, it's already, we're less than a. We're a month out, right? So.
Two months.
No, we're looking at.
It's I thought it was October.
Nope, yeah, November twentieth now. Yeah, we're we're in, we're gonna do Nov- November now because we have so many votes anticipated for October that. Didn't want to hold those up.
Oh, I'm behind the curve here, I'm so sorry, so we have plenty of time, okay?
Yep.
Uh in terms of an agenda item for the meeting, I I would like to suggest that we. Pose a a very specific question to the audience around, um you know, after we let them know, you know, we're. Not going to have any incoming funding um after this year. Um and we've highlighted the great work that that we've been able to do with the funding that we've had. Um they're just posed to the audience a specific question around, you know, if they have any ideas on. Who else or whether what other entities could uh help to support the mission of the Jobs Trust Board? And what those activities might look like, uh just to see if folks have additional ideas or starter ideas that. We can then bring back to the board and and start to play with a little bit. So, you know, no need for like breakout groups or anything like that, but just kind of pose it as a a question to the audience and. Get folks to, you know, raise their hand and share their thoughts or email their thoughts in as we've done before, you know, if they. Come up with ideas after the meeting to give them a couple of weeks after to email in ideas.
Yeah, I think that's a great, it's great to focus around a question like that, Vicky. So I think similar to our structure last year, probably. Doing our presentation, pausing for questions and then moving into a. What ideas do you have for us around sustaining this work?
Yeah, and I think, William, on your question about, you know, are the ideas board member-led, city-led, a combination? It'll all just depend on the ideas, so I think that'll be kind of a second. Layer of questioning once we start playing with some specific ideas. Okay, does anybody have any grand ideas right now? Rachel?
I mean, I do think, I do think the employer side of things is going to be an important part of what comes next. I think it's worth us really looking at the legislation. For the trust and if there's a pathway to things like a matching program. Um currently looking into what the state does for more tailored programs that they develop. Um they have a, it's called the Pathmaker Program where they work with larger employers to develop a specific training program for them. And they think about like, it's a partnership, right? And so like, find the training partner, find the, it's a big employer. Plus, training partner plus state funding. Um is there a like, if you're willing to do that with the city of Somerville, like. Is the trust like a a boost to existing state programs, right? Like. I think there's some state programs that we can be looking to to say, okay, what's happening at the state level? Um and can we start to like think about those helping foster some matches? Um whether they target the nonprofit or they target an employer, like I think that's a. A partnership that we could be exploring.
Rachel, you're talking about, I know there's uh like direct grants that. Employees can get from the state for training programs, is that what you're talking about? Okay.
Exactly, and so if they can get a direct grant. And they have to put, but they have to put together the package, right? Like, I think that's what's kind of interesting, it's like they have to put together the package of who's the training partner. What's this? Like, if it's a Somerville employer that's doing that or a regional employer that's willing to. Boost seats for our residents, like, I think that would be really exciting, especially the Somerville employer who's applying. And they're getting a grant and we can use the JCRT to add that, like. Add a hundred K to their fi- existing five hundred K, like. And we build into that a bit more of a like, and you have to advertise in Somerville and these are the channels that you're advertising, like. Um I think that could be a way of, I don't know, just bolstering seeds and training programs that are going to happen anyway.
So we'd have to do a little research on uh what those programs are, I know, like, we'd we'd get notice from. The state that, you know, a certain amount of money was available for workforce training. Um you know, so we'd just have to maybe dig into that, but you know, that's that's an interesting idea and it might be. Something like we could, you know, partner with, it would probably be with that employer, and my guess it would be. Some of them were actually for small employers, you know, where they might be trying to do, you know, whatever, whatever funding it is. But I'm even thinking maybe, you know, an employer like the Cambridge Health Alliance or somebody where they might be doing. Training for a specific, you know, fields and, you know, the then looking, obviously, I know they're always looking for local residents. Um because it just makes sense to, you know, have residents in the in the neighborhood. But yeah, I I think it'd be something worthwhile to at least look into.
Maybe we can put on our agenda for like a January or February meeting, having some information about these types of programs. So that way we have a more specific idea of what they require and how we could fit into them. We've got a pretty busy fall coming up, but around January, February, the grants will be out and. We won't have to worry about another RFP for a little bit to do some of that research.
Yeah, we're also, we're on our end, we're working on growing our workforce team back up again, so we're we're. I think like on our way to home almost for the workforce planner who's going to be focused on wage theft. Um issues and workplace quality, um I think we're in the final stretch, I hope. Um goals to have that advertised in the next, you know, my hope is days, days to week. And that that actually, that i- is the next position and then our senior planner position, we can start filling in January, so. Again, going into the springtime, we'll we'll have more, it will not be William on his own. We will, we will have more support um to be also able to like boost our our research capacity on the staff side to support and work for the trust.
Fantastic.
Something else that I wanted to mention too, um in. The both of the recent RFPs for good municipal jobs and the fall twenty twenty-five. JCRTRFP, we are asking the proposers to. Tell us about their their budget, tell us about their funding strategy, um kind of gauge a little bit. About what the sustainability of their program looks like, whether or not we're able to fund them beyond. The current grant that they're applying for, so I would just encourage. Those reviewing proposals to see, you know, which programs do seem to have matching dollars. Uh which programs are really relying on the trust for a hundred percent of. What they're doing, um because that that could be an important uh point of differentiating.
Great, so William, at our next meeting in October, do you want to come with a more detailed outline of what the uh. Board or the annual meeting could look like?
Yeah.
Maybe we could uh start to assign or get volunteers for different speaking roles and. Uh assist with that meeting?
Yeah, that sounds like a great next step and I can work um on. Seeing who who might be avail- interested and available on the the employer side. Uh or partner side for for part to for speaking um as well.
Great.
Just a question on on the on the date. When, when do you think you'd be ready, William, to actually the official notice for the for the meeting, cuz I know we just talked. We were nervous because we thought it was October, but it's November, but that'll be here before we know it, so and then. I know trying to give, you know, businesses, you know, they always want as much time as they they can upfront. So that they can schedule things in, so wha- what are you thinking about to have official notices out?
Um. I'm open to to what the board thinks, but I was, I was thinking at least four weeks heads up. But if we think a little bit more notice, just because the meeting date is running close to the holidays.
Mm-hmm.
Um we could do a little bit more, but yeah, that was definitely going to be like an October thing for me to. To work on.
Yeah, maybe, so we'll um. Yeah, I I say at least six weeks, but I know that that you've got the RFP coming up. However, maybe it'd be smart just to try to get it out of the way over the next two weeks while that RFP is still open.
Yeah.
You'll be swamped uh. October third through the ninth and even after that, so. Yeah, I might say, William, go ahead and work on that now.
It's it's quick to put together and I think the more notice, the better.
Yeah.
Um for employers and everyone who might participate.
Yeah, and it's, we don't have to have the full agenda, we just need to save the date, sort of.
Yep.
Then we have enough, you know, information on what we're going to do to be able to fill out a save the date.
Yeah. Great, I'll drop, I'll drop one up and circulate it with the board.
Great. And then October twenty-first meeting is going to be a big one, so hopefully uh we'll have everybody can make it.
Or I think it's. I think it's the sixteen.
Oh, sixteenth, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I was thinking the August twenty-first, yeah, sixteenth, yep.
William, I think uh Tom and I let you know that we're unable to make that sixteenth.
Yeah, yeah, I know you have the.
We have the.
The advisory.
Yeah, meeting.
So I don't know if you, you want to move down the that meeting or?
Yeah, are you feeling pretty, pretty certain about that date?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's locked in now, yep.
Unfortunately.
Okay, need to reschedule?
Yeah, cuz Rachel, I think you're also, will you be out the sixteenth?
I I will be, I would, my plan was that I was calling on remote from London. Uh actually, I think I'll be in Berlin at that point, but I was, my plan was to be remote um joining you all, but if we are not on the sixteenth, either way, I will, I will make a way.
Okay, um. Let me see if I can find an alternative date and if we can get it to work for more people than the sixteenth, then. We can move that, it'd be great to have everyone participate, I'm a little concerned about like. Getting something that works with the city council meetings and all of that, but I will see what. Scheduling magic I can work.
You've always done it in the past, William. Thank you, no, it's a pain. Okay. Anything else on the annual meeting or the next October meeting for our board? Sounds like we got.
Just just be prepared for potentially a lot of votes, so it's, I don't think it's going to be a thirty-minute meeting. I'll give that disclaimer.
Good point, good point.
Never had a thirty minute, yeah.
All right, well, um I guess before, oh, Jim, you have a.
Yeah, sorry, I missed the beginning of the meeting, we had parents' night here, um so the RFP. That um everybody looked at a couple of weeks ago, is that what we're going to be voting on in October?
Yeah, we're probably, we're hoping to have recommendations on that and then. Yeah, we're probably, we're hoping to have recommendations on that and then also to have recommendations on the current RFP that's out. So.
What's that October third one that's due?
Yeah, it's due October third, so it'd be quick turnaround, but we're hoping to make. All those recommendations. At the October meeting. So there's a lot, a lot that could be there, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well. Before I seek a motion for adjournment, because I think we're getting there, William, right? Did you have anything else? Okay. Just wanted to share some some news about me that I will, I've. Been diagnosed with early stage breast cancer. We caught it early, so there's no. Terminal. Issue or anything like that, but I do have to go through chemotherapy over the next four months. So I will be looking a little different. Looking a little tired and not participating in the meetings in person. I'll I'll be on Zoom. And yeah, the chemo and then surgery and then radiation. So the next year's. Not going to be a fun one or an easy one, but it's a eighty to ninety percent survival rate. So. You can't get rid of me that easily. But I have already had the first chemo treatment and. Body does not like chemo, I am realizing. So dealing with some side effects and so that's. Well, I'm a little low energy, but thank you for for your support. I've told William and Annika, I still plan to be on the board and. Participate, just, you know, a little lower, at a little lower energy level. And yeah, open book about it, but I I wanted to let you all know what was what was going on.
Well, Vicky, thank you for sharing that with us and. You know, we'll all be pitching for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck with everything.
Thank you. Breast exams, women.
And keep and continue to keep us informed if 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 you can or want to. I I really appreciate your sharing that news.
Everything, Vicky.
Thank you.
Let us know if you need anything.
Prayers, good vibes. I totally believe in the positive energy of the universe. I've been doing daily meditations. This this cancer. Pick the wrong gal.
I I I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that one bit.
Yeah, you guys know me, you know me, you know, it doesn't stand a chance. So especially with all you on my side and in my corner. So I appreciate you.
We have counselor and boss here as well in person. Just wanted to mention that he is here in the meeting.
Hi, Vicky.
Hello, hello.
Trying to hear about this, this news, we'll be praying for you.
Thank you, thank you, my friend. And congratulations on your your success so far in the election.
The victory belongs to all of us. Thank you.
All right, friends, are we going to get out of here in less than an hour? I think so.
I'll second that motion.
Excellent, okay, roll call vote, motion to adjourn, Tom Ben.
Yes.
Vicky Coates, yes, Silvana Dinka.
Yes.
Jim Hatchey.
Yes.
Jacob Luria.
Yes.
Wilfred and Ba.
Yes, please.
Rachel Nedkarny.
Yes.
Rand Wilson.
Yes.
All right, the vote passes unanimously. We are adjourned at seven twenty nine P M. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, thanks, everybody.
Bye bye.
You have a great night, everyone.